We'll call the 6th August meeting of the Manhattan City Commission to order. First order of business is Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'll please stand and follow me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
We have several things to do tonight. We'll start off with public comment. Then we have a hearing. Excuse me, we have consent agenda, then hearing, and then two items on the general agenda. And we'll have a further explanation of that public hearing once we get to it. It has three parts in it. So first of all, we'll start off with public comments. Now, these are comments that are not related to anything on either the consent agenda or the general agenda. You'll have an opportunity to speak to those when those items come up. So does anyone have a comment on anything that's not on one of those agendas tonight? Be happy to hear from you on anything. Okay. We'll now go to Commissioner's comments.
Yes, I'd just like to call everyone's attention to the ATA bus service here in town and the fact that right now, for I think till Friday, maybe, it's free. So if you've never ridden the ATA bus, go ride it. And get, I mean, this is the perfect time. And just explore the community. You'll get a feel for the community that you don't get if you drive everywhere.
I just wanted to say, summer's almost over for the kids. That'll be a good vacation for parents, is what I usually think. School starts next Wednesday. We don't have a meeting on Tuesday. So I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware that the school speeding zones will be back into effect. And to be cautious, sometimes we get used to, I'm sure all of you are used to driving really slow with the way we have cones all over town these days. But hopefully, you're more cautious as the students come back to school with bikes and all. So good luck to everybody that's starting the new year, regardless of which grade you're going into, and for all the teachers that are probably setting up their rooms as we speak.
Well, KSU starts, we're trying to figure that out, 23rd, 26th, something like that. So that'll be even more traffic. And Ron and I were on K-Man this morning, and Ron spent a little bit of time going over some of the road improvements that we're trying to make right now. And some of those are doing pretty well, and some of them are going to push into the time when we'd like to have them done, when the students get back in. Particularly the one up on North Manhattan Avenue will probably extend into October. So that one may offer some real challenges for people either trying to get in, particularly to KSU or Aggieville arguably, and then to get home again. Because North Manhattan is a preferred route for many people. Had an opportunity to spend a little time around town on Saturday. We had the Brutus U race, and that's for benefits a lot of charities. We also had Everybody Counts down at the Douglas Center. And then we had Water Matters out at the zoo, and that was well-attended as well. So if you're looking for something to do in Manhattan, you don't have to look very far. These weekends are usually pretty darn full. We have Just Try It coming up, and I know we have about 15% more than we did last year in the young people that have signed up. And I think, Eddie, we're still looking for some volunteers, right? We still need some people to do some intersection control. And I know several of the clubs have signed up to help. So if you're interested in having a great time watching the little ones, they swim, they bike, and then they run, and then the adults follow, and that's a great time on this Saturday morning coming up. And then the pool, did you want to say something about the pools?
Yeah, so as was mentioned, the summer's kind of drawing to a close as far as our activities. So this is really the last full week of all pools being open. Saturday will be that last full day for all swimming pools to be open. And then Sunday is Pet Palooza. That's a fun day to take your pet to City Park Pool this year. So we're using the big water park, so the dogs can have more fun, too. And then after that, Seco Park will be the pool that remains open through Labor Day, but on reduced hours. So after school starts, we do reduce the hours because of guard availability and just not having enough folks that would come to the pool. So all that information's on our website, so encourage you to visit that, be informed about those schedules.
Thanks. So item four is the consent agenda. These are items that are either housekeeping in nature or things that the commission has previously considered. And any one of the commissioners can take one of those items or more and move them to the end as a more, if we can have more discussion. So we'll now open the floor to discussion of the consent agenda.
I would just like to ask Ron about the professional services agreement with Tischler Bice. And just curious about at what point the public can have some input. We're approving the contract tonight for the consultant about annexation in Potawatomi County, but I wonder about input.
So the scope of services has a schedule. This is a very detailed cost-benefit analysis. So the early parts of the study are really looking at gathering data. And then towards the end of it, we'll be looking at sharing that data in a variety of different menus. And Eric, you might be in a better position to speak to that specifically, but...
At the end of the process, there's two public workshops
Okay.
that the consultant will be doing. And then, you know, the outcome of Phase One is the city commission basically decides are we going to proceed to some version of Phase Two. And Phase Two is where you would look at different annexation options, if any, and, you know, what order and to what extent. And so that would be probably more where there might be some public input. But as Ron said, this Phase One is really more of an economic analysis, cost-benefit study. There's really no public input.
Which is what we really want.
Right.
Yeah. And I noticed that there's a Phase One and a Phase Two, and there's not a Three, right? Okay. Thank you. I appreciate your answering the questions. With that, I would, oh, Yusha.
So on the consent agenda, are there any public comment on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll come back to the commission and entertain a motion.
I move that the commission approve the consent agenda as it's been distributed here.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mayor Dodson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ready.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner McKee.
Yes.
Commissioner Morse.
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero.
So we'll now move to item five, which is the public hearing. And during this session, this will be to consider adopting the 2020 budget and amending the 2019 budget. So there are three pieces to this in addition to just a discussion. So approve the first reading of an ordinance adopting the 2020 city budget and an ordinance amending the 2019 budget. And to approve a first reading of an ordinance establishing an equipment reserve fund for the city of Manhattan. And third, approve the first reading of an ordinance amending Section 6.53 of the Code of Ordinances. This regards impoundment and boarding fees at the animal shelter. So we'll just start with Bernie on the city budget for 2020 and the amendment for 2019.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners.
And we'll just officially open the public hearing as you're making your presentation.
Thank you. This is the sixth hearing on the budget. We've gone through five work sessions. And before I start, I'd like to just give a few kudos around, obviously, my staff, Amy Albert, our senior staff accountant, and Rebecca Doleen, our Budget and Operations Officer. But also to the staff and management. It is a team effort, and to you as a commission. I know you've been through a lot. We started this process clear back in February with the annual revenue survey, gone through those five work sessions. And I know at times it's been a little bit, well, I don't think it's acrimonious, but it's been a little bit difficult. And we obviously are going through a period of time now where our revenues have flattened somewhat. And with that, I'd like to take you through a very quick PowerPoint and then be happy to answer any questions, as would staff that is here. The assessed valuation, as you know, didn't increase very much. In fact, this is the lowest increase since 2011. And prior to that, prior to the big recession of 2008, but including 2008, 2009, and prior to that, we were seeing double-digit percent increases. It was a boom town, a boom time for the city of Manhattan, and we enjoyed that immensely. And in fact, during that period of time, even had some tax decreases, as well as mill levy decreases. Of this 585 million, which for those listening, 1 mil would be 585,000. So with that, we get this growth off the $10 million, $10 million in growth from 575 to 585. And it's something I think deserves just a moment of explanation. Because two of those, those improvements from growth, and we get those from both Potawatomi County and Riley County telling us what the new improvements are. And the remainder of that is from market growth. And that's those adjustments that are made, up or down, or none, on residences and commercial establishments across the city. The proposed increase for 2020 is $238,000, a little less than half a mil. That's what we presented at the fifth work session. And honestly, Commissioners, it's my strongest recommendation that that's what we adopt. I know that the city manager has given you a separate memo with some different options. But I can tell you, and I know you've heard this before, and I don't have a slide on this, but over the last five years, our revenues have increased on average about $187,000 in the general fund. You've heard that. I went back and looked at the budget for 2019 compared to 2020. And if you take out the beginning cash, because you may recall that we ended 2018 due to the city managers tightening down on spending, we ended with a little over $3 million, about 3.1. If you take that out and take out property taxes on both ends, the amount of revenue that's increased from 2019 to 2020 is $103,000. That's it. And I don't know that it's alarming, Commissioners, but it certainly puts us in a position that in the future, and I'm looking ahead now to 2021, if things don't pick up, it is going to become that much more difficult. And I think as a commission, and those who are running for commission as well, should expect that there will probably be additional mill levy increases that'll be suggested and needed in order to fund the 2021 budget.
Just a comment, Bernie.
Yes.
You know, one of the things that some of us have suggested for a long time is we try to live off what's in the top right-hand corner. And that is, if the value of our property in the city increases, in this case, $252,000, we ought to try to make that work and have that be our budget. In this case, the tax increase is 238, which is actually less than that. Doesn't mean we ought to not try our best to get it down even further. But I think, as most people know by now, because we've said it several times, is when we look at the personnel costs, particularly for COLA or STEP increases, that is somewhere around 1.24 million dollars. So this is a very difficult equation to solve. But appreciate you working so hard and getting it down to this level, at least.
Thank you, Mayor, and you're absolutely correct. Of course, other expenses go up as well, and we know that, both fuel, lights, those kinds of things. This is what the published mill levy looks like, and I know it's small. And I just want to call your attention to really the difference on the levies. We had some decreases, obviously, in our CPD. We did reduce down the delinquency rate from 2% to half a percent. And that helped considerably in getting that mill levy down. The bond and interest fund also is going to take a decrease. But of course, the ones that I think are difficult and speak to what the mayor just mentioned, boy, benefits are going up, and there is still a small increase in the general fund as well. Just looking back over these five work sessions, you can get a little bit of a feel for where we've been and where we're going. We started off the first work session admittedly well over the tax lid. That is something I try to calculate early based on the best estimates we have at the time. And we were over and knew we would be over. But I think the idea was that we really wanted to show you what it probably takes sometimes to fund government the way we would like to see local government funded. And then, of course, the decreases that took place as we finally reached the first fifth work session, and of course, the public hearing this evening. If you look back historically, you'll notice that we've been declining. And we had a small increase in 2017, but compared to 2018, we're just shy of 50%, about 41% reduction compared to the levy in 2018. And of course, you can see the property taxes that are subsequently levied as well. If you look at a $200,000 residence and looking at that 1.8% valuation that increased, you get a little bit of a feel for where the taxes will come from. And this is an estimate. We still don't have a levy, as far as I know, from the school district yet, so that's an estimate. The county is, I think, pretty accurate of what they are publishing as a levy. And our city taxes, somewhere around $22 to $25 on an annual basis, a small increase, I believe. If you look at a small business and look at that same 1.8% increase, it changes dramatically. And remember, under state law, residences, the market value of a residence is taken times 11 and 1/2% to get the taxable value. For commercial establishments, it's the market value of that commercial establishment taken times 25%. And that's why those taxes go up appreciably for commercial establishments across the community.
And when you, when we get our tax bill, which is at the end of the year from the county, you see at least those three portions on there. In other words, you'll see a $292 from us, $731, and so on, from us, the county, and the school. And that, I think everybody needs to also remember that about half of that amount for us will go to our CPD, as we pay 80% of the operational cost and the county pays 20%. So even out of that number, we get half of what's showing on there.
You're absolutely right, Mayor. A number of years ago, Jason Hilders, our deputy city manager, asked if I would put together a hypothetical tax statement. And interestingly enough, I now send these out. I wouldn't say on a regular basis to people who call me, but on a frequent basis. Because it shows precisely where a person's taxes are and the percentage of where those taxes are distributed. For the city of Manhattan, it's been this way now for a number of years. We're less than 11% of anybody's tax bill, commercial, residential, it's the same. And it speaks to exactly, Mayor, what you said. Our budget summary, if you look at this, 2019 compared to 2020, and I would call your attention to 2019 general fund. Because remember, we still have that 1.5 million that was supposedly going to be transferred from utilities to the general fund. That will not happen. So really, our general fund budget for 2019 is $30,405,000. And you can see then what the increase has been proposed in 2020. If you look at the bottom line, and I know I've received calls on occasion from people who say, "When will it end?" It always goes up 6 or 7 or 8 million. But honestly, some of this is so explainable, I think. It's about a $7.5 million increase in the total budget proposed for 2020. But that comes $3 million from our Trails and Recreation Fund, which is a reserve fund, of course, looking forward to not only trails enhancement, but also for the recreation centers that are being proposed. 3.4 million from economic development funds, and $640,000 from the water fund. And together, those three make up about $7 million, a little bit more, of that $7.5 million budget increase. Our CIP funding across all funds looks like this. And I added the Equipment Reserve Fund, which is one of the items on the public hearing agenda tonight. One of the things I probably ought to call attention to are the other special revenue funds. That 1.6 million for capital outlay really resides in the City University Fund and in the Trails and Recreation Funds. So that makes up really almost 1.4 of that 1.6 million. Continue with the capital outlay and looking backwards then, from 2016 to 2020, you get a little bit of a feel for what we're looking at this year, or propose for 2020. Rather small, but again, we're going to do something unusual. I met with the leasing officials at Congress Bank yesterday. They've been working with Gilmore Bell in Kansas City, who are their leasing attorneys. I've been working with Garth Herman, who is our bond counsel from Wichita. And I think we're pretty well ready to put the lid on this whole leasing idea. I've asked my staff to start to put together a model that's going to be, I think, helpful not only to management, but maybe even the commission in the future. Because one of the things, as we look at this equipment lease program, one of the things we're going to have to be aware of is where we're headed to make sure we don't end up with too much on an annual lease basis. So there'll be more to come on that, and I think I even have a slide that speaks to that as well. Here's a summary for the budget. We're talking about, of course, a small increase to the city's tax base, an increase of $238,000 in property taxes. That's still a decrease in the levy from 2019. Seven new positions that are recommended in the general fund. Nearly all of those are revenue neutral. We've had either increased revenues, or we will reduce expenses in the 2020 budget to accommodate those. And then, of course, we have a 1.6% cost of living and a 2% increase in the city's step pay plan. And we are recommending adoption, of course, of this new equipment reserve ordinance. We have another item on the budget tonight, and that deals with an amendment of budgets. And we do this frequently. We did it last year for several funds, for 2020, or for 2019, rather. We're looking at two funds. And both of those increases are the result of cash carryover from 2018 to 2019 that we anticipated. But now, we talked to Public Works, and they would like to be able to spend some of those funds. Both of these deal with street maintenance, and as you know, that's high on everybody's priority list, I think, to see those streets continue to get repaired. So that's the second ordinance that we're talking about. The third ordinance is the Equipment Reserve Fund. Again, it's a $487,000 program that was started in 2020. Water and wastewater funds would be supporting, at least for the first year, this program. As a result, we anticipate roughly about $40,600 from each utility fund in 2020 based on the seven-year lease. When I visited with the leasing officials at Congress yesterday, we're viewing this lease purchase, or this equipment reserve lease purchasing program as somewhat a traditional program. In other words, it'll be kind of fixed. It'll be a master lease. In other words, we could add to it in 2021, 2022, and on out. But it's intended to look and act pretty much like a normal lease would, except for multiple pieces of equipment. So there'll only be one payment a year, and the interest rate will be somewhat lower since it is non-taxable. We're looking at another leasing program that is much different. Probably more about that later on. And as I mentioned earlier, we have a couple of caveats, I think, to this Equipment Reserve Fund. One, I don't think we intend to take money from water and wastewater inevitably for the future. But obviously, that depends on when we get out of this somewhat flat revenue climate that we're in right now. But we'll be looking every year at what other revenue funds, additional funds, might be available. And then number two, and again, I think so important, to make sure that we monitor this program as we look at forward and as we roll that program forward, to make sure that in any given year, say year three, four, or five, that we don't have lease payments that simply can't be made by available revenues, and we don't want to tap the utilities for those amounts. So the actions that we're looking at tonight, they're somewhat fourfold. I'm not speaking about the fee increases for the T. Russell Rice Animal Shelter, but Eddie Eastus is here and can do so if there's any questions. So we have a public hearing on the proposed 2020 budget, a hearing on the 2019 amended budgets, and of course, then the proposed Equipment Reserve Fund, which is new to the city. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Maybe just a couple of things on the Equipment Reserve Fund. Before, we'd talked about kind of why you would establish this, where the equipment is largely located. The assumption is it's either in Parks and Rec or it's in PW. That's where most of the equipment that we have resides. And then the why, if I remember, was you get a little bit of smoothing, and then as you get, you get a little bit of a break because you've got arguably a discount on the number of vehicles that you can provide in the program, just like you would in a fleet discount. So is there something else in there for the public, maybe?
You really summed it up well, Mayor. That's really, I think, the underpinning of why we moved in this direction. I think one of the frustrations, and I know that city manager can speak to this, invariably, our capital improvement program has been called a wish list and not an active program. Even though we identify funding, so many things get pushed back because we know, especially in the general fund and some other taxing funds, if they appear in those funds, it's going to raise taxes inevitably, or the mill levy. So the tendency has been to minimize those impacts in those tax funds. And this is one way, we believe, to do that in addition to perhaps making it a little bit less expensive by multiple pieces of equipment at one time.
I have a question. The November sales tax on the ballot, if it passes, when will it go into effect, January?
It would go into effect three months later. So it'd be April when the first revenues would come in.
So three months after January, three months after the, okay.
In April, yeah. And there's that, remember, Commissioner, there's that two-month lag in our sales tax collection. So those in July were retail sales in May.
So if we take these in order, it might be easier. So item one, again, is 2020, 2019 adjustments and the special streets. So are there any comments from Commissioners on that first? And then we can go to the public and then come back. Okay, from the public, any comments on item one, which is really the 2020 budget, the 2019 budget adjustments, and the special streets? Okay, hearing none. We'll come back to the commission, and we'll do these one at a time. So we have a motion on item number one.
I do have a question, and it's about the economic development money. And it showed, the materials show that in 2020, the budgeting authority will be $11.28 million. As I think about economic development, I can't just take that figure and say, "Ah, we have that much." Because they're tied up or committed. So I'd like for you to just tell me how much... So I'd like for you to just tell me how much, when I think about the Economic Development Fund, how much can I really think that we have available to us?
Well, remember, Commissioner, we have three funds.
Right.
We have the Meda Fab Fund, and the old Riley County sales tax, and of course, the one that's active yet. So there's different amounts on all three of those, but roughly, I think we're looking at somewhere around total of $6.5 million, something of that nature.
Six and a half?
Yes, that's across all three. And I think I might have given you some materials, maybe at the fifth work session, that broke that out, but it's around six and a half million.
I just want to be sure that from this, everything before tonight has been floating and changing. So I just wanted to be sure that we were all on the same...
And I just want to make a comment as well before we make a motion on this. I think sales tax revenue is what's been lagging, and even though we've had a decrease in enrollment at K-State consistently, that might pick up at some point. But we do have some, I guess, optimism for the future. We might end up collecting online sales tax. That's happening right now as we speak, so that could help us. You know, CVB is also, we're investing a lot of money, as we usually do in CVB, to make sure we get more people being attracted and coming to Manhattan, Kansas. And even though the country stampede has moved away, we are looking at better options and better facilities to use. So we continue to invest in our community to grow our sales tax, so we don't have to collect property tax all the time. So I think all in all, we don't want to raise property taxes, but I think we are right now about as little as we can raise it, mostly for personnel, and we want to keep our personnel here, even though we're competing against Kansas City and everywhere else. They can leave, everybody has options to leave, and we have a very young staff and very mobile people, and we want to keep them here. So I think that's something I don't want to look at as far as cuts, at least not in this budget session.
So as I look at the numbers, you know, if you had a flat mill levy, you're still increasing through property tax and growth by over half a million dollars. And my thought has always been, we should live within that constraint, just like somebody that gets a paycheck. You know, you get so much money, that's all you can spend. So our budget should be based on, you know, the property tax piece on a $519,000, you know, increase, $519,000, and not $700 and something, because, you know, we want to spend more money than we're taking in. And so I can't support the budget, because I really don't think, you know, we could knock the rest of that out of there if we had to, and there just isn't the willpower to do it. But I'm not going to vote to support the budget.
I believe that raising the mill levy by .4, that's less than one-half of one mill, is entirely reasonable. We're looking at some of the other fees that we haven't raised for some years, and we may raise, like maybe the animal shelter. There may be some others that are 10 years old or haven't raised them lately. And, but I think that's entirely reasonable. I look at the flattening of the sales tax revenue that we receive. I look at the housing markets for National State and Kansas, and National and Manhattan. And it's important that we moderate and be as flat as we can, and we just still have to have some growth in this community. And we don't have to have mills, multiple mills, we don't have to have millions of dollars, but this is an ever-so-slight increase that we should be able to tolerate it and make it work for us. I am committed, as usual, to giving our employees raises. I think that that has to be the last thing before the lights go out, kind of an approach, because we ask a lot of them, and sometimes we cut a staff member or two, and others have to pick it up. I've been in situations like that, and I, it's good to know that your employer is supportive. So I know with the flood and the kinds of things that we ask of our employees beyond the normal things that they do, it's very important that we support them. I wish we could afford wonderful new equipment all the time, but sometimes we have to let our equipment and our vehicles age, and that's what we've been doing. And that's the right way to approach it if you're government. And so I'm going to support the increase of .4 mill levy.
Did you want to say anything before we consider the motion, then? Yeah, we're going to do, we're going to do one at a time.
Yeah, so I thought about this a lot the last few days, and I read the city manager's memo on what it would take to get to zero, and I still think it hurts, but it's possible to do it. We just approved more than $230,000 in the consent agenda that we read, not even 20 minutes ago. But I think what frustrates me about this entire process, even at a .4, last year when we did this budget, I brought this up, and I'll say it again, if something fundamentally doesn't change, we have to raise your property taxes every single year to fund just personnel costs in the city. And the state has failed us, really, in two really big ways. They could help us solve this problem. The first is taking up internet sales tax, which they were one of the few states in the country who failed to do that the last legislative session. And because of that, your property taxes are likely going to go up this year. The second big thing that they could do is they could, you know, take on some gall and add a couple more income tax brackets and do revenue sharing like they used to with cities and counties. When we need to increase revenue, there's only two places we can go, either sales tax or property tax. That's it. You know, me and Charles, I've said this 100 times, me and Charles Koch, I'm going to get in my car, drive my 2011 Ford Fiesta home tonight, and me and Charles Koch are in the same income tax bracket in the state of Kansas. And I bet you I pay a bigger percentage of my income to taxes than he does. But the state has not taken up action to fix those issues. If they would bring back that revenue sharing program, when we had times of slump like this, we wouldn't have to turn to regressive taxes like property and sales tax to raise revenue. So it's incredibly frustrating. I don't know if I can support this, only because, a couple of things. First, I think property tax in Manhattan is just as regressive as sales tax. 60% of our community rents a property here in town, and every time that we raise sales tax, that property owner and that landlord is going to have to raise their rent. And the difference is, is they have to pay that tax increase, but they're not building equity into their home. I've already received a letter from my apartment complex that my rent is going up next year. Also, every time we pass a property tax increase, it makes it a little bit harder for that young family to buy their first home. It makes it a little bit harder in a slumping housing market for people to get in, and get into their first home. And it's just a kind of frustrating situation. Again, I don't, I won't be supporting the .4 tonight. But with that being said, that's not to say that I think that the city manager, if we were to pass a zero-mill increase, is in a great position. We would have to cut city services. Some of the things that were suggested were reducing pool hours and the amount of staff that we have at events that help with our kind of community and our lives here within Manhattan. And it's not just about what happens at this table, it's about what happens on the county level, it happens, it's about what happens at the school board, and it's specifically about what happens at the state. They could be creating and being in a much bigger role in this, because they have more taxing authority than we do, and they have tools to, a more progressive, fair taxing authority. So I can't do a tax increase on middle and low-income people in this community, so I won't be supporting the .4 budget increase.
I just want to make one more comment on that. I just want to make it clear, when we make a motion and take a vote on this, the city is .4, but the USD 383 is about 10, and the county is about 2.8 mills. So we are doing the very bare minimum. I agree, we shouldn't be doing anything at all, but if you don't do anything at all, we can't meet the services of the city. So I just want to be clear, because when people see their property tax in front of them, the whole blame will fall on the city. And that's fine, but I think we also need to be clear about the other entities that are also have a taxing authority in our community.
We entertain a motion.
Yeah, I move we approve first reading of an ordinance adopting the 2020 city budget and an ordinance amending the 2019 budget for the Special Street and Highway Fund and the Special Street Maintenance Fund.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ready.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
No on the 2020 city budget, but yes on amending the 2019.
Commissioner McKee.
No on the 2020 city budget, yes on amending 2019.
Commissioner Morse.
Yes on both.
And Mayor Dodson.
Yes, both.
Motion carries three, two on the city budget, five, zero on the Special Street and Highway Fund, and the Special Street Maintenance Fund as well.
Now, we'll move to item two, which is a first reading of an ordinance establishing an Equipment Reserve Fund for the city of Manhattan, and we'll move to public comment Bernie gave the explanation of the reserve fund right at the end of his presentation, so it might be a little confusing, but that is meant to be on item two. We'll come back to the commission. Any questions on the reserve fund?
I think the reserve fund's a great idea to address some of the issues on the equipment, so I'm all in favor of that.
I'm not a big fan of it, but I will support it. We're making payments for the next seven years, and if the economy is not any better in the next few years, where it's just going to compound, and, but it's a solution for this year. And I do think we have to look after the quality of the equipment, which is what this is all about. So it means we sock away a little bit each year for the new fire truck, or we sock away a little bit each year for the dump truck, and those kinds of things. And, but I think, long-term, we can have some issues with it, but I will support it.
Yeah. Well, first off, also throughout the night, bear with me if I start to ramble at all. I'm running a little bit of a fever, so my mind isn't quite as sharp as it usually is, so bear with me. But I'll go ahead and make a motion. I move we approve first reading of an ordinance establishing an Equipment Reserve Fund for the city of Manhattan.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner McKee.
Yes.
Commissioner Morse.
Yes.
Mayor Dodson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ready.
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero.
Okay, now we'll move to the third part of the public hearing, and Eddie, are you going to present on this part?
I could pull up the draft ordinance, but all it has is a few alterations to some dollar changes. Happy to answer some questions.
Yeah, well, let's at least discuss what three elements are in there, Eddie, and so the public can see it.
Within the ordinance for the animal shelter, there are several fees that are associated with various offerings that the animal shelter provides. Anytime that an animal is delivered to the animal shelter, if a person comes out to reclaim their animal, there is a reclaim fee that currently sets at $30 to reclaim if that animal has a city license. If that animal does not have a city license, the fee to reclaim that animal is $40. The recommendation tonight is to increase both those fees by $10, so the $30 for a licensed animal would move to $40, and the $40 for an unlicensed animal would move to $50. Of course, if a person is reclaiming the animal and it's not licensed, it will have to be licensed before it leaves the shelter. That's within that ordinance as well. The other fee that is associated with that is a boarding fee. Any single day, I could pull that ordinance up, I have it up here. And I'll pull that draft ordinance up.
So we have impoundment, boarding, and then spay and neuter, right, as the three elements of the...
Actually, there's two elements, because the spay and neuter, the language within the ordinance allows that to be set by the city manager.
Okay.
So that fee is not set within this ordinance. The ordinance simply has the language that allows the city manager to set that fee. Yeah, that's where I'm at. It should be there on the, on the K, but that's not, there we go. Excuse me for pulling this up for just a minute. Because I just placed this in here for us tonight. And you notice I wear glasses so that I can read better.
Well, maybe we'll just take these, just to review one at a time here.
That draft ordinance was in your packet tonight, and as soon as I can locate it here, we will pull it up.
On impoundment, we're going from...
I'm simply, I'm just not seeing it there. Did you see it? That's as far as it goes down. That's what I was speaking of, simply those dollar changes from that impoundment fee with an animal that is licensed from $30 and increasing it to $40. You see that 10 to 20, again, there's a boarding fee for every single day or a partial day that an animal is housed at the animal shelter. When you come to reclaim, you also pay currently a $10 boarding fee. What we know with working with K-State, that they're more familiar with an average cost of anywhere from $20 to $40 per day to board an animal. We have not adjusted these fees in the time that I've been here, in the 15 years that I've been here with the city of Manhattan. Obviously, I think they're lagging in what we're charging. We've talked about the cost of the animal shelter. These fees should be keeping pace with our expenses, and that we should be addressing those on a more regular basis than once every 15 years. That's the recommendation tonight, to increase those. As well as, in your packet, I did include a paragraph in regard to spay neuter. The language in the ordinance indicates that the city manager sets that fee, so it is no lower than what any vet charges in town, nor higher than what any vet charges in town. So there's a variance, and that's why I'd also put in there, we're continuing to investigate to make sure that we are real clear on what the lowest charge for any vet charges for spay and neuter in town, as well as the highest that any vet charges in town, and we'll make that recommendation to the city manager to adjust those fees. That spay and neuter fee had been adjusted, but it's been four or five years since we made that adjustment.
So both the boarding and the impoundment increases are going to pay for the additional person that we want at the animal shelter.
No, will not entirely pay for that. It will assist in paying for that. One other thing, and we haven't brought that information to you yet, currently, K-State traveling veterinary or surgery trailer performs a substantial number of the spay and neuters that occur at the animal shelter. They do that at no cost to us. So we're going to be able to dramatically reduce the cost, what it was costing the city of Manhattan to perform those spay and neuters, by working with the university. And we've been only doing that for less than six months. So combine this increase in fee, as well as a reduction in expenses by our partnership with the university, we feel like that we can cover the substantial amount of what that new employee cost would be. I'm not, I'm not going to commit to 100% of that or even exact amount, because these adjustments tonight are always going to be dependent upon the number of animals that we receive at the shelter. So that's a moving target at all times. As well as, you need the spay neuter, because it's an adjusting number based on the number of animals that come to the shelter. We know that's increasing, though.
Okay. Can you hang on just one second?
Sure.
Any questions for Eddie?
No, I'm happy to see this. I know there's some other things to do, because there's much we can do on the animal shelter to recoup, and again, I'll take the time to put in a plug for, you know, people... we would probably pick up about six figures.
Well, I'll, I'll comment on that in regards enforcement, because one of the things that's happening now, and it's our partnership with the university, they are also performing rabies vaccinations. So, we don't have an animal that leaves the shelter that's not licensed. So, we're selling substantially more license at the shelter than we have in the past. We used to have a certificate program for both spay and neuter, we still do, a certificate program, where a person has to deposit a certain amount of money, and they would be in written birth for that when they brought back that certificate that showed that they had received their rabies vaccination. We couldn't issue a license because they didn't have a rabies vaccination. All we did was issue a certificate. But now, as we're able to, in partnership with the university, go ahead and vaccinate animals, we're able to sell that license. So, we're increasing the amount of license that we're selling.
Eddie, I would just like to say that I'm really pleased with the partnership with the university, because their students benefit and we benefit, and so it's exactly the kind of thing that we need more of.
I'll, I'll even say we've received substantial donation from the Wrights family to assist with a surgery unit that we're working on, so that we can perform, so the university can perform surgeries at the shelter.
At the shelter, instead of in their van, or their trailer?
Correct, correct. So, we're seeing a lot of benefits from really enhancing that partnership.
Good, good for all of us, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, this is a, a great partnership, and I think this is, you know, pets are part of the family for a lot of people, and whether they're losing, whether they have a cat that strayed, or moving, whatever it might be, it still falls upon the community to take good care of them, so they're not a burden within our community, but also with, to themselves, and in the shelter, again, that takes highly trained staff. And it's good to keep up with the fees, too. I don't think this is unreasonable, as far as what we're charging. I think if we don't do this, we'll end up paying more in the long run. We're already paying a lot more right now, as it is, to sustain the animal shelter. So, no, I don't think this is a cost prohibitive for the city or for anybody that brings their, happens to be at the, at the shelter at this point, for, for their pets, anyway, and this is good in the long run. But I know there's a lot, a variety of pets we take care of, not just cats and dogs. So, hopefully, all of that is also a good partnership with Kansas State University and their vet program.
It's, it's quite interesting to go out to shelter when K-State is there and just watch their animal management. And our animals now are receiving so much more care and attention than they did in the past, and it's not a fault of anybody in the past, it's just the frequency and the number of university students and staff that are in our shelter on a regular basis now. So, we really feel like people are getting a bargain, and they're getting quality animals when they come out and adopt at the shelter.
Just one more quick comment I'll make is similar to Commissioner Butler's, and making another plug for licensing animals, and just, I hope to see increased communication on that. I remember a story that I shared when I was running for city commission, the day that I came to one of my forums, my dogmae doesn't escape from my house, ended up at the shelter, and I didn't know, at the shelter, they were like, she's not licensed, so you have to pay the licenser, and I didn't know that you had to license animals, and I was running for city commission, and I'm like a nerd and watching meetings for fun before I was a commissioner. So, if I didn't know, the average person that has a life and does regular things probably doesn't know either. So, I've seen a few things on the website, if you've seen a few things on social media, I just wanted to say, appreciate that, and I hope we continue that kind of public outreach to increase those, because I think there's probably 10% that won't do it regardless of whether they know or not, but I truly think probably other 60, 70% just have no idea that they're supposed to do it, so.
Well, I appreciate that, and I want to, I want to comment on that, because some of the reasons for the request for additional staff at the shelter, we've talked about increasing our education, and we have a person at the staff now that's, that's almost exclusively dedicated to social education, and we are going out in the community at Everyone Counts. We were there for that, and obviously, Pet Palooza is going to be a tremendous education aspect. We've had the animal shelter almost every Friday, staff and animals at Arts and Park. We're trying to really increase that education, because it's not a fault of people sometimes to not know. Maybe we're not providing enough education, enough information, so we've really put an emphasis on that, and so it's, I think it's, I think it's reaching people. It's creating, I mean, we have to convince staff to it. It's creating a challenge, you know, for us managing animals at the shelter, so I appreciate the support, you know, towards that, because it's a very important service that's provided for the community.
Well, let's ask the community if there's any comment on this item number three. Any comment on the fees for impoundment or boarding? Okay, seeing none, we'll come back to the commission and entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we approve first reading of an ordinance amending section 6-53 of the Code of Ordinances regarding impoundment and boarding fees relating to the T. Russell Wrights Animal Shelter.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Commissioner McKee.
Yes.
Commissioner Morse.
Yes, yes.
Mayor Dodson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ready.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero.
We'll now move to item six, which is the general agenda, and item A is consider a first reading on ordinance amending ordinance number 6628 for the Lee Mill Village PUD in conjunction with the Manhattan Area Housing Partnership Project, along with the final development plans, and it'll be Chad Bungar, Assistant Director of Community Development. Chad.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you, Mayor Chad Bungar, with the Community Development Department. As you pointed out or mentioned, this is an amendment to the Lee Mill Village Plan Unit Development and the Final Development Plan. This is the approved plan that was originally approved in 2007. It was for 52 townhome lots, four dwelling units per each lot, for a total of 208 dwelling units. Everything internal to the development, so Reef Avenue is here, had two access points on the reef, here and here, everything internal to that were platted public travel easements. Seventeen of those 52 lots were developed, 10 townhome units within the, the majority of the site, and then, excuse me, six, seven lots over here were built as two-family dwelling units, as a minor modification to the PUD. As you know, the city claimed this property, or majority of this property, off of a sheriff's tax sale because of delinquent taxes, and has been actively attempting to market this, to bring it back onto the tax rolls in a, in a positive manner. The proposal before you this evening is to have the Manhattan Housing Authority, Housing Partnership, excuse me, purchase the land and develop majority of the lots. Get to a slide here. These lots here in the inner circle, as we call it, as duplex, or two-family dwellings, as well as a potential clubhouse that would be primarily for office space, for, for renting of the, of the units, and, and meeting space for the community and whatnot. Before you tonight is modifying a few of the conditions, and then also considering changing the travel easements into public road right-of-way. The, the major changes is to allow for single-family, two-family, and then three- and four-family townhomes, to allow for a variety of uses within this plan development, reduce the parking that was required for the site. Let me find it here, I apologize, I had it scribbled down. To where, from 520, which was two and a half spaces per unit, down to just two spaces per unit, to reduce that parking, that would be more in line with what our duplex, or even our single-family attached houses would require for parking. Allow for the clubhouse to occur, and then, as I mentioned, the travel easement, changing to a public right-of-way. So, to clarify that, a travel easement is a public street that is owned and maintained typically by an HOA or an ownership association. It's still a public street, it's just who maintains it is someone different than the city. The proposal would be to change that in its existing form, same wide, right-of-way width and street width and design, and make it a public street that the city would own and maintain. Some of the streets, as you can see here in the overhead, or the aerial, are built, and others are not, and that would come with the development plan with the future owners. Other than that, there are no real changes, there are no other changes to the PUD ordinance. The preliminary development plan would show is this. Everything really lives within the existing footprints that are there. The only one big change is that this one lot would become that community building for the neighborhood and, and the housing authority, or partnership for a lease office of sorts. Trying to think if I have anything else to add. The memo clarifies all the rezoning elements. The planning board heard this two weeks ago, a little over two weeks ago, and recommended approval for the PUD amendment, as well as a final plat to alter the right-of-way, and city administration would carry that recommendation on to you.
Chad, as I look at some of the homes that are, were an early part of this, I think, they're, you know, the streets are narrower, and it, as I look at it, there's not much room in front of the garage to the sidewalk.
Sure.
Is there, what is the, is, is the foot, footage here that you're planning enough so that if someone parked it in a car in the garage and parked in front of their garage, there's, they're not going to be blocking the sidewalk and get a citation or for innocently parking in their own driveway?
Sure.
I want to be sure of that.
Yeah, Rob, you go. And I believe so, but Rob knows the, the site much better than I do, so.
As I understood it, the change from 2.5 to 2.0 was that one car was to be in the garage, one car was to be on the driveway, right? So, the question is, does the car fit between the end of the garage and the beginning of the sidewalk?
Commissioner, I'm going to pull up a video that we took in July, and I can probably stop it, it's a pretty good-sized file, we'll see if it pulls up here. As you drive from the north to the south, we can just kind of take a quick look. I don't have exact measurements.
But it does accommodate a 21-foot car or truck, right?
It probably, well, let's take a look here. The operator of the Cameron vehicle had to adjust in the beginning there. So, again, we're starting, or we're heading southbound essentially, so here we go. So, I don't know if that answers your question right there, Commissioner.
Or the exist, that's the existing, yeah, okay.
Yep, so...
So, the new ones would be built to the same?
I believe that the, the perimeter, or the lot lines, or the footprint, whatever you want to call it, of each unit, it has to fit, whether it's a single-family, duplex, triplex, or fourplex, is in the identical spaces with this replat, and the design and layout is very similar.
I think it's here, but it is just so small that nobody could read it, so that's why I thought I better ask. Okay, all right.
Well, does that answer your question?
That's a standard-sized car, that's what I wanted to know, yeah.
I can keep playing it just for, if there's any other questions about the character of the roadway. The roadway is roughly 22 feet in width, from back of curb to back of curb. Obviously, just the right-hand side on this video is developed, there are some parking spaces.
What will happen to the, the grassy area on the left of this video? Will those, those will turn into homes?
So, that's, I'm not going to speculate what it's going to turn into, that's...
That's not part of this project?
That's not part of this process.
I see, okay.
We would hope, we would hope that it would be sold, and we would hope that these lots would be developed.
Someone would mow it?
So that, so that the taxpayers are no longer...
Yeah.
...on the hook.
That's the goal.
I have another question about sidewalks. It says in the packet, sidewalks are to be provided on both sides of Oak, Oakbrook Place, Wild Oak Place, and no sidewalks along Pepper Street, Circle, and Rose Walk Place. Why are there not sidewalks on Rose, Rose Walk and Pepper Tree?
They're probably short cul-de-sacs.
So, even, do...
So, you have...
So, our ordinance says when you make new development, we have to build sidewalks, so that doesn't count if you have a cul-de-sac?
It depends upon the length. Some cul-de-sacs, if you go to them, they don't, we don't bring the sidewalk all area around the cul-de-sac, around the bald portion, and you can find that in numerous places in the community.
So, 10 years from now, the city's not going to, the city or state's not going to be paying money to build sidewalks there?
I can't speak for what the state might require.
What's the, I guess, what's the thought behind exempting those?
So, I'm sure, I mean, this development was, uh, was unique in terms of its layout and street size and, and building designs and a variety of things. I wasn't a developer, I don't even know if I was here at the ti, or just started here at the time, but as you could see by its layout, it was intended to provide some affordable housing. And so, I'm sure not providing those sidewalks on, on those other cul-de-sacs were, were part of that strategy, would be my guess.
Okay, I might have some more questions about, I mean, because arguably, any developer on any road can say...
Sure, I agree.
I'm trying to provide affordable housing, so I'm not going to build sidewalks.
Fully agree, I mean, yes.
And they try.
Yeah, and they do try, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, it is a development pattern I would not encourage very often.
So, we're providing, so my question is, we're providing this exemption because of something specifically noted in our ordinance about it being a cul-de-sac, correct?
Uh, it was an exemption specifically for this development, not so much, I would say, for the fact that it's a cul-de-sac, per se. This one is a short cul-de-sac, so it probably wouldn't warrant it or justify it, but...
Was that exemption based on, like, ordinance and policy, or is it just because we're being nice?
Um, it was probably a development request of this PUD.
Okay.
You might just notice that if you're in a place like Candlewood, for example, and you go into a cul-de-sac, and the, the house on the left begins immediately at the cul-de-sac, as does the one on the right, the sidewalk terminates at the driveway.
Sure.
And then, the only thing that there's no sidewalk between are the lots where you essentially have your lawn, so, I don't know, it, it kind of makes sense that you don't have too far to walk on the sidewalk to get to your house from there, but the normal width of a, one of our streets is 30, is that right, Rob, rather than 22?
So, there, I mean, there's certainly some history about street width. We have streets publicly platted and publicly maintained streets in road right-of-way that is narrow as 25 feet back to back. We have some that are 27 back to back. We do, you know, we've, and we have different guidelines for 25 and 27 in terms of posting no parking, at least on one side, for emergency access. 31-foot, we allow parking on both sides with no parking. So, to answer your question, Mayor, we do, we do, we do have some different examples out there, they've been physically built, but 31-foot is the most common.
But I think we, we have to be somewhat cognizant here of parking on the street, because the fire chief is going to want to get his fire truck down there, and with that kind of a narrow street with a car on each side, it's arguably, it'll be too tight, so we've got to make sure we've attended to that.
How wide is this one, or these?
Twenty, Commissioner, it's 22 feet back to back.
I saw in the, in the... I saw in the, in the materials that the urban area planning board had a discussion about making the streets one-way.
That, that discussion actually came up, I don't want to say it wasn't the neighborhood meeting, I believe it was the HOA meeting that was discussed. As an option, folks from property owners at the HOA meeting, we talked about widening the roadway. There, my discussions with the Vice President, Peters, you know, he wanted the road widened, I said, "Well, then we'd have to do a benefit district, and it would be 100% the adjacent property owners." That was not agreeable to him, nor did he believe it would be supported by the HOA. And yes, one of the options we threw out was a one-way street. Further discussions with Mr. Peters, he didn't appear to be in favor of that either, or in need, and he indicated to me, or led me to believe, that the HOA wouldn't support that either. Again, once it becomes a public street, that really comes under the purview of the city commission and any recommendations from staff, so it's an option that's out there. We shall see in the future, depending upon issues.
Just to kind of summarize here, just to hit the major points, so the parking reduction is from 2.5 to 2, and again, one in the garage, one on the driveway.
Yeah.
And then, second, that we'd have 1, 2, 3, and 4 structure homes, right?
Correct.
And then, third, is that instead of having HOA maintenance of the streets, those would become the purview or the responsibility of the city.
Correct.
Those are the three major...
Those are the major ones, and then a minor one is to convert one of these lots into a community building.
So one of the things I liked about this is that we were in a predicament where we bought that space, and hopefully we get it back on the tax rolls, but also provide some housing, much-needed housing, and with the partnership with Jill Jacoby and the Manhattan Housing, is that Housing Authority, not Housing Authority?
Partnership.
Partnership, yeah.
I think that's, that works well for us, but some of the concerns that were raised at the meeting was about drainage as well, not only the streets being so narrow, but about stormwater and drainage and everything that might happen when everything is so confined in an area. Can you speak to that just a little bit?
Probably defer to Rob again. The drainage is what it is. It's built, it's approved, the only thing that isn't there are the rooftops, and so, Rob, I don't know what more you have to add to that.
So in terms of drainage, I'm going to pull up the memo that we had prepared for. I should just look this folder up. Okay, drainage study, you know, honestly, I don't believe you're approving tonight anything that's going to increase what was already previously approved. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So whether it's single-family, duplex, three-plex, or four-plex that goes on those lots and those squares, you're still going to have basically the same amount in purview area. You have basically two runoff patterns, you're going to have water that's running on the east side and the west side. On the, on the aerial, I almost screwed it up. That's not the right. So on the west side, there's a ravine that's between Lee Mill 4? Okay. Lee Mill Unit something. On the left-hand side, or the west side, and basically that water runs all the way down. There's a sedimentation pond or a four-bay just before Barton Lake, or that area that's just to the north. When this development was approved, all the runoff was intended to go into and feed that lake, so that they had a fresh supply of water and had enough water to maintain a certain elevation. At one point, because of droughts, believe it or not, City Manhattan's actually had hot spells, and it didn't rain around here, they were actually pumping water out of Wildcat Creek into Barton Lake in order to maintain a certain elevation, so that they didn't lose all their aquatic life in it. So, when this development was approved, that runoff from this area, there's no detention in Lee Mill Village when it was approved, because it was accounted for in Barton Lake. So I don't know if that's the drainage concerns that you're talking about, or what.
Are we going to have any kind of flooding issues, or any kind of drainage issues, or stormwater issues, because now we are developing it? And I keep going back to things that we did previously in other areas where it was a problem because we had developed it, but it...
Again, we accounted for zero detention in this area, and that was accounted for in the development just to north. I call it Barton Lake, that might not be the proper name, and might have a different name of Fairman, but that was already accounted for in terms of the amount of volume runoff, frequency of storms that would go into, into Barton Lake, in terms of its emergency overflow and its capacity and so forth, and discharge in the Wildcat Creek.
I just want to make sure.
No, I...
I just worry, because that's been the topic, and there's reasons why people don't develop on certain properties, and I just want to make sure we're addressing all of those. My other concern is, if we are giving, we are creating a PUD based on modifying some of those standards and some of those, I wouldn't say code so much, but some of the sizes, once we get the UDO, would that alleviate some of the decisions we're making tonight? Or would, would the UDO not, would we still be making these types of decisions once we even implement the UDO?
Yeah, the UDO won't affect this planning development.
Not this particular one, but things like this in the future. I feel like we're...
No. I think this is a rare enough development. We don't see this development pattern too often. If someone were to come and propose something similar, we would go through a planning and development, or we're going to call it a PD, or Plan Development Process with the UDO, so the UDO won't change this development, and if any similar development were proposed in the future, it would occur in a similar fashion. This has a lot of unique characteristics to it in terms of the size of the lots, the location, the street widths and all that, that it would occur through a Plan Development Process.
Well, nothing about it is normal.
Right. It's a, it was, it was a unique development and prime for a PUD, and the market wasn't there to support it, and we see that now.
And at the same time, I don't want to, I don't want us to create any kind of animosity between the neighborhood and the HOA in that area, because these are people we live with, they're our neighbors, and we want to continue to work with in the future. So I just want to make sure this is such an anomaly that we do it right, because the expectation is it's going to fail and nothing good's going to come of it. So I feel like it falls on us to do the best we can to make sure it is successful, and make sure there's no damage done to anybody in the surrounding area, because that, that was not why they bought their house in that area to begin with. That happens in every kind of zoning area that we do, but especially because I feel like we are very responsible for what's going on in this particular Lee Mill Village right now. So, yeah, we'll see.
There was, I'm sorry. Commissioner, there was one more paragraph in my memo to community development and the planning board. Again, that stormwater will continue to enter the same four-bay prior to reaching Barton Lake, both features provide opportunities for sedimentation. Again, this is even before we had our best management practices manual adopted, so this was, I don't know, a little bit ahead of its time, so to speak, when we approved, or when the planning board and the city commission approved the original PUD. So those features will remain and will continue to be there. So, I can't, I will never say that there will never be flooding. There is always an event out there that can exceed design standards, it just always is. So you're never going to hear me say I'm going to guarantee or ensure this will never happen, because there's always rainfall events that exceed this.
I just want to, yeah, I just want to make sure it's very successful for that whole entire area, because this is an interesting thing that we're doing this time, and hopefully we never have to do this type of buying land and being the developer and everything else part of that.
Yeah, I hope so, too. Commissioner, is there any other questions? Any other questions on sidewalk, Commissioner McKee?
My concern, and I don't, you won't have an answer tonight, but I'd like for us to consider how we can avoid situations like this again, and that's in the development stage. So is there, like with economic development, we, proposals, we vet the applicant. And so these bankruptcies that put the onus on us, and it takes six, seven years to resolve it, and we end up paying property taxes, I just think we need to find a way, and I don't know what that is, and it won't be necessarily popular, and I hope there's, it's not anything that's majorly onerous, but I think there are some ways we can assure that it doesn't get this bad again. And I'm not criticizing anybody, I think we just, we've landed here, and we need to get out of it, so I want to push on to get out of it.
Okay, well, let's hear from the public on this issue, if anyone has anything they'd like to comment on. I'll just remind you kind of the rules here. If you had to sign in and state your name and address, and we give each person five minutes. And just to remind, this isn't a hearing about covenants, this is a hearing about the ordinance establishment, so we'll have a separate, a separate agenda later on for any discussion about covenants. So please come forward. Yes, sir.
My name's Jeff Rogers. I live at 1108 Leon Ridge Drive, and I'm the president of the Lee Mill Heights Homeowners Association, which pretty much surrounds here, here, and here, this development. So we've had lots of discussion about the street being 22 feet and how narrow it is, and one of the questions that you had, Commissioner Morris, was the grassy areas, is that going to be homes? Well, according to this drawing, yes, it is. And if you've noticed on the video, there's people parking in those areas now. So the solution to, by reducing the parking, is to have one in the garage and one in the driveway. Well, that works real well on paper, but whether it's going to work in the real world, we can see people are parking out there now. So if you have young people, maybe buying those townhomes, typically they use that garage space for storage. The other item is, I don't know how we're going to control the quality of the construction in this area, but to go to Commissioner Reddy's concerns, a lot of those houses that surround this are pretty significant investments by the homeowners, and we'd hate to have to go to Riley County and appeal our property tax levies based on the quality of construction in this development. The last thing I'd like to bring up is, in 2018, this commission approved rezoning west of Miller Parkway and Amherst Avenue for assisted-living, senior-living housing, and it's been brought up that this is needed in Manhattan, but yet haven't broke ground on any of that. So my question is, how bad is this senior housing really needed on this side of town? Because you've got Bear Construction getting ready to build a pretty good-sized one over there, so is there going to be too much on that side of town? So I'd like you to consider those things when you're considering this first read. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please? Come on up, while he's signing, and...
Is this it, right here?
Yeah. Anyone else? All right, we'll come back to the commission, and I just had, just to clarify on this parking thing, Chad, is it up to the city, or how would we, to address this, this issue of parking spots and throughput on these roads, can we restrict parking in the streets? I mean, I know we have that in some areas of town, but I just don't know how we, since the planning board approved the as-is, I'm not sure if that was part of their consideration or not. I read what the planning board said, I don't remember seeing a specific discussion on no parking on the streets.
Rob just reminded me, and I can pull the video up to show you, the interior roadway today has no parking on it.
Oh, it does?
And I would imagine it would...
I believe so. My video's not Google quality, but I do believe it's posted.
There are, wait, there's some white signs.
Additionally, and Jason, you can correct me if I'm wrong, there are not built, but proposed with the final development plan originally, several off-street parking areas just on the edge. Here's one now, there, there were a few proposed on the inner circle that, on the undeveloped side. Jason, do you know, will those be built with this, or...
I'm not sure they've decided, since they're reducing the number of units by half. That's something that, with the duplexes, instead of the four-town homes, the number of units is actually cut in half with this proposal. Jill Jacoby with Manhattan Area Housing Partnership didn't believe they would have an issue with needing to park in the street, but they also recognized if they needed to add it, they would. Like Chad pointed out, there's cutouts for it that you see on the existing development that are part of the PUD in the future, but their discussion with us, they didn't believe they would need it, based on their usage in the community today and similar product.
So the major road pass there is Wreath?
Correct.
And then you've got what you've called internal roads, the 22-footers?
Mm-hmm. And I believe Wreath, South Wreath also has no parking, correct, Rob?
Yeah, that's a, that's a classified as a collector, so there's no parking on that as well.
So I appreciate the concern of comparatively this dense of development to the areas with single-family homes and local streets of 31 feet and cul-de-sacs and those sort of things. But the reality is, if there were to become a parking problem with the duplexes, with the garage and a driveway, like every other home in town has, one, there's not a whole lot of opportunity for it to spill out anywhere else, because you would be walking up an extremely steep, up or down an extremely steep hill, and it would be quite a long jaunt away. And there's also the potential for these cutouts for additional parking spots. Again, I don't know if those will be built because of the need, the clientele, but there are several opportunities for those to be built, so.
Okay. Did you have a comment, Rob?
I was just going to make a comment about the original design of Wreath, and Rob can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe when we originally designed Wreath, it was still under the intent that Wreath would connect to North Wreath across Wildcat Creek, and that's why it was built to the standard that it was. It's pretty unlikely that that connection is going to occur anytime soon, given the extensive floodplain that would have to be crossed and the design standards that that bridge structure would have to be built to, and that was prior to us being, connecting Miller Parkway to Scenic Drive, which, again, there was concern about whether or not that would be a reasonable enough connection to provide access, alternative access. So I'm not saying it'll never be built, but I'm just saying, at least in the meantime, the typical standard for that trafficway of no parking may not be totally applicable in the long run.
Okay, further discussion?
I just have a couple of quick comments. First, I'm pleased to see this and comfortable with it. The only comment that I want to make again is on those sidewalks. I just wish, it might make sense to not offer those in Rose Walk and Pepper Tree, but I wish we had something more specific in our ordinance in terms... wish we had something more specific in our ordinance in terms of if we're going to provide exceptions, this is what we're going to provide exceptions on. Because just north of that, those cul-de-sacs, if I'm looking at the map, just north, those cul-de-sacs all have sidewalks on them. And so if we're going to offer, in the interest of fairness with developers and rezoning, we should have more clear exceptions. And especially if we're going to make exceptions because it's affordable housing, we should probably be clear what affordable housing means. So I just, I wish there was something more concrete that we could fall back on. That way it was more clear how we were making these decisions. In this case, it's a relatively small area, but I don't know what prevents a developer from coming to us now and asking for a bigger exception. The only other thing that I would say about this is I'm glad this is going to be catered towards senior housing, although I will say my job today isn't not, is not to decide whether the market can sustain more senior housing or not. It's to decide whether these four exceptions to the PUD are in accordance with our zoning laws. And I don't see any big reasons why they would not be, so I'm supportive of this tonight.
I think it's been important in the past, and it's been Manhattan's philosophy, to have mixed use development in our large areas. So the Miller Parkway as a whole, Colbert Hills, we have, and around the community. And senior housing, public housing, it's a goal so that we don't have any one area that is treated differently or... So I think the fact that the density has been reduced by half is significant because this was approved, what, I don't remember, six years ago as, or seven, 12 years ago? And so the fact that we have reduced the density by half, I would like to do what we can to help. I think the residents there will be, you know, maybe they won't have as many cars. I don't know. But I just know that we have to offer housing to people with different needs. So I plan to support this. I would like, for us, if the residents are, come to the city, I would like for the city to cooperate and by making it one way. And I think that would ease some of the congestion on the 21-foot streets. So that would be something we could change. I don't plan to insist on it tonight or anything, but it's certainly something that would ease the crowding.
Further discussion? Entertained a motion?
I move we consider first reading of an ordinance amending ordinance number 6628 for Lee Mill Village PUD in conjunction with the Manhattan Area Housing Partnership Project along with the final development plan.
Second?
Call the roll, please. Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
And Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero. We'll now move to item B, which is to consider the first reading of an ordinance rezoning the proposed Colbert Hills Stay and Play Development from RS, that's Single Family Residential Suburban District, to planned unit development. And again, we'll have Chad present.
Thank you, Mayor. So this PUD rezoning proposal is South Colbert Hills, it's the area outlined here. There are two parts to it. The, and this is a broader area, it takes a portion of what is now the Colbert Hills Part III Golf Course and some practice area. The proposal is two parts, two phases. The first one, which will begin immediately, is to create two 6,000-square-foot stay-and-play cottages. Each building would have 16, or would be able to sleep 16 guests in some bedrooms, have living area, a small kitchenette of sorts. It would gain its access off of a travel easement connecting to Colbert Hills. No parking's proposed here. It's really just access for fire and guests to drop off their luggage and whatnot. The market would be for golf outings, other guests that want to, you know, use the clubhouse. This would be highly associated with the clubhouse. In fact, all the parking would occur in this area or even be dispersed throughout the rest of the clubhouse parking. The idea is, again, it would be highly associated with the clubhouse and the golf course. The other element before you with this rezoning is an indoor golf practice facility here, a 10,000-square-foot facility exclusively for K-State's men and women's golf teams. It would have its parking lot and access directly off of Colbert Hills. This development is, there is no timeframe for it, nor real specifics to it. The landscaping, the building design, those sort of things beyond what the Grand Mere Association requires for building design and landscaping. Anything associated with this development would need to occur at a later date with the final development plan. But as you can see here, we have landscaping for the cottages. And that's the bulk of the proposal. It is a rezoning as well as a preliminary development plan. The details about the rezoning and the standards are in your packet. The planning board here heard this a few weeks ago in July and recommended approval with four conditions of approval to go along with that. And the city administration is also recommending approval. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, thanks, Chad. Does this, I think it's, and they're asking for it to be rezoned, but is this something that, even though it is, the applicant is Kansas State University Golf Course Management and Research Foundation, is this something that would also be, we would be collecting property taxes on?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So even though it's affiliated, I wasn't sure about that.
Right, yeah, it's, my understanding, well, I don't know its tax structure. I don't know if anybody else does. It's a foundation, but my guess is we would be collecting a tax for it.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to be clear about that. Because it is the foundation, because it's Kansas State University, I wasn't sure if it's considered nonprofit and if we don't collect or how this works.
I think the rule is it depends on the use always. So like the K-State Foundation, the new office buildings on campus, if they lease them to a private company, then they pay taxes. If it's used for university work, then they don't pay taxes. So there's that flip. So I think it's by the square foot.
Yeah, and this is a business.
Yeah.
Right? So, and it's not a K-State business, not affiliated with K-State. So I just wanted to be clear about, clear about that. I think it's time to have something of this sort as far as practicing inside and something close, near the golf course. My husband golfs a lot, and wherever he goes, there's something there, at least within that one or two mile radius. So it seems like something we can do, and there isn't a timeline. So I just want it to be rezoned tonight and the PUD for it, right?
My understanding is the cottages, the two living areas, they're ready to move on. In fact, we have the final development plan ready to go in the queue. So they're ready to move on, on the two guest spaces. The indoor practice facility for K-State golf teams is unscheduled.
I think it's worth looking at. I think that area needs a little bit more incentives for people to come and be at Colbert Hills, too.
I do have a question. On page two, there's midway, it talks about, based on the findings in the staff report with eight conditions of approval.
That might have been a...
And then I can only find five.
Page two.
The little paragraph above the five toward the bottom.
I apologize if that was a typo.
Okay, so they're really just five?
Should be just four.
Four?
And they are that Colbert Hills Circle, which will be the private cul-de-sac, will have no parking. Final development plan for the golf course or for the practice facility will have more detail of its landscaping and building design. Dumpsters need to be provided and adequately screened and dealt with. And then just to immortalize or to ensure that this pedestrian crosswalk occurs from these developments into Colbert Hills Clubhouse is planned accordingly with the final development plan. So those are the four.
Yeah, it's a little hard to tell from these kinds of drawings, but you know, the things that, beyond the fact that I think this is a good idea, two things popped out to me. One was a sidewalk. I mean, we've got essentially eight two-man, two-person rooms in each one of those buildings. And arguably, they're going to want to have breakfast or something, so that means walking over to the clubhouse. So there's got to be a sidewalk in there someplace.
Yeah, and I apologize, it's not coming up real well. There is sidewalks, and I'm, and, you know, in golf courses, probably cart paths as well, that basically they run from the front of the building around this cul-de-sac, if you can see my cursor, and then into this area and out into the clubhouse, so.
The other item has to kind of follow on from that. In other words, if there's no parking over there, that, that end of the cul-de-sac comes out on Colbert Hills Drive. Then if you, you have to go, I mean, this isn't a long ways, but you do have to go a ways to park your car.
Sure.
So you have to pull in there, take your luggage out, then go park your car, then come back. That wouldn't be in the way that I would want to set it up unless there's a golf cart waiting for you at your parking spot that is designed to take you back to your residence.
And I know represented with the, with the clubhouses here, so maybe they have other arrangements or abandoned arrangements.
I just don't know how we got to the point of not having parking on the cul-de-sac, but I know if you've got 16 pairs of folks, if it's at full capacity, a parking lot out there wouldn't make any sense, so you really have to use the main parking lot. I'm just, from a perspective of being user-friendly, I'm just trying to think through how you get from, over to breakfast or how do you go to dinner?
Sure.
You've got to get to your car some way, so.
I'll let, I'll let the golf course expand on that if they have any special ideas with that. There are sidewalks. We were, we worked pretty hard to make sure that there was that pedestrian or and/or golf court connectivity from these units over to the clubhouse. So I know that it will be those. And the vehicle stuff is...
Was Bernie going to come up and talk?
Yeah, I think so, if you're ready for him.
All right, why don't you come on up and sign in?
Good evening. Bernie Haney, Executive Director of the KSU Golf Course Management Research Foundation. Get confused with Mr. Bernie Hayen all the time, but we look like brothers, so it works out well. But just a couple of comments. Number one, to answer a couple and address your questions, we do pay property taxes currently, so obviously these would fall under that scope as well in paying property taxes based on the guidelines that are set forth and that type of thing. We currently pay, just so you know, about 50, some thousand dollars a year currently in property taxes based on all the land, over 300 acres we do have, and then the clubhouse facility. In terms of parking, one thing that wasn't mentioned, but in terms of the back of the two facilities on the two lodges, will be a cart path to the driving range area and cart path. So our goal at that point in time is to park carts up near that area early in the morning. We are going to put them away late at night, just to protect them and for safety reasons. But there's access there. And then over there, right in here, these are actually dedicated parking spaces for the lodges. And so that's where we're going to encourage the patrons to park most of the time. Now, we do understand there'll be some times when they might have more than eight vehicles that they're going to have to maybe park in our main parking lot. But we have dedicated spots that we're going to put up signage reserved for them in particular, just in case we have a wedding going on or some other event up at Colbert Hills. But we're excited about this project. There's two other golf courses, actually three other golf course facilities in the state of Kansas that have a stay-in-play concept. Will be the second public one, Prairie Dunes in Hudson, Kansas, is a private country club that has a stay-and-play, and they've created this model with the 6,000-square-foot building with a common wall down the middle, so you can split it up to two different groups or use it for one entire group. Flynn Hills National was the first one. It's down in Andover, Kansas, and it's a very private club that now has 32 beds and their stay-and-play opportunity, but a lot of people come in from out of town. And then actually up at Firekeeper, north of Topeka, built one lodge, even though they have the casino right across the street from the golf course, they do have a lodge on the property. So we would be the fourth one that would have something of this concept. So we're excited. We think it will generate some more revenue for us, being a nonprofit, to be able to keep up and maintain a first-class facility here in Manhattan.
That indoor facility seems like a great idea for our golf teams, too.
Yeah. Obviously, this past winter, it was very difficult for the K-State student athletes to have an opportunity to practice. And so the reason there's no timeline on this, it's all going to be dedicated based on private fundraising dollars. And so you've seen the K-State Athletics Master Plan that they've created, and this is one of those projects. It's just a little bit farther down the list until we find a lead gift.
Do you, will you be charging a bed tax on this thing? I don't know quite how.
Yeah, per the guidelines, and we have visited with the city staff, so that will be something that we'll charge as well and be part of the TGG tax.
Any other questions for Bernie? All right, well, thanks very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Good luck on this. Any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll come back to the commission. Any further discussion?
I move, let me find it. I move first reading of an ordinance rezoning Colbert Hills Stay and Play PUD, a 6.4-acre site generally located on the south side of Colbert Hills Drive at the intersection of Colbert Hills Place and immediately west of the clubhouse and area, and parking area from RS, Single Family Residential Suburban District, to planned unit development based on the findings in the staff report with four conditions of approval.
Second?
Having the motion, I would just like to say that the Colbert Hills area is still building out, that it was finalized in the late 1990s with like a 20-year build out expected. And this seems like a logical extension for a golf course to have an amenity like this. So it seems like something that would be desirable to the folks that golf there. So I'm pleased that we're able, that the Golf Course Research Foundation is continuing to build it out. And I, you know, property taxes are good.
Hey, call the roll, please. Mayor Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
And Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero. Okay, there being no further business, we'll close the commission.